Alright, good evening everyone. We're here at the Susan Tully Wadley Boardroom. So, we'll be in A7 building for our Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. School Board meeting. Let's start with the run of the business.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. The Constitution, the Constitution, for which it stands. One nation, under God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Call meeting order and a roll call, please.
Adam Andre.
Here.
Eric Gordon.
Here.
Kevin Gayhart.
Here.
Ed Scarrow.
Here.
Heather Reckles.
Here.
Kathy Costa.
Here.
Nicholas Parkes.
Here.
We'll note that Julia Ingersoll is excused this evening.
Alright, the speeding notice has been properly noticed, so we're prepared to proceed. Community participation, is there anyone? Would like to speak? I didn't receive any cards, but. Does only like that, so, continue on. Overnight field trip request from the middle school. Okay.
My name is Lex Schultz. I am the middle school band teacher here. And I am here to tell you not only about the, um, the trip we took last year to Kalahari. Because I wasn't unable to do that before, but also request that we repeat this next year. So, the picture that I have up here is the group that we took last year to the Kalahari. Um, for the Beyond the Notes Music Festival, um, in the Wisconsin Dells. It is a music festival that is a hundred percent focused on middle school musicians. Unlike the one we just did two weeks ago at Six Flags. Um, where we perform before and after high school groups. This is a hundred percent for the middle school musician and where they are at now. We took ninety-nine students, um, to the Kalahari. And anytime we trailed, it was spectacular. We were like a wall of purple. I had, I had a new student this year that said, "I remember you guys. You were that purple group." We're like, "Yep." Because there were ninety-nine kids in purple t-shirts walking through the Kalahari. It was amazing. Um, do I have the opportunity, the ability to click right now?
No.
So, this is, um, this is. This was the warm-up space. Um, there wasn't a lot, a lot of opportunity to take pictures of the kids. Um, so this was just all of their excitement as we were off. And this, we performed at like eight in the morning, so the fact that they're smiling is spectacular. Not on all their doors at like six thirty in the morning with a bag of breakfasts like, "Good morning." Um, and, um, and we warmed up together and that, it's large group. This is seventh and eighth grade. Um, I took a couple of screenshots of some of the clinicians that are there. We actually got to work with Peter Haberman, um, who was absolutely wonderful. Um, I think the kids, aside from the, the water park was awesome, were like, "We really love Dr. Haberman." He was fantastic. He really knew how to meet the kids where, where they were at. And I told them, "I want to be him when I grow up." Um, but because it was just, he was a lot of fun and really got the kids, um, connected. And the one thing that he really said is our kids were really receptive. Um, he would say, "Play this short," and they would play it short. Crescendo here, and they would do that, which is, um, being able to, to be, um, be receptive in that way is spectacular. But you can see they have, um, composers, there are college professors, there are teachers who have been teaching middle school for twenty-six and thirty years, and our very own, um, Dr. Hayes from UW-Whitewater. Um, I don't know who we'll have this year, but these are just some of them. There's also percussion ones as well. Um, this was in the actual clinic we perform, and then we go to, um, a clinic in a different room where they spend about forty-five minutes with us, working on our two songs. Um, there's also a separate percussion clinic room where they get to go and have their own, um, their own time with the, the clinician. And then this one, it's blurry, I apologize. I was trying to get a panoramic of all of, all of the kids in there. But they really, um, they really loved it. He got in there with them and, and was wandering around, not just standing there and talking at them.
This has to be the loudest convention in all of town. For all those breakout rooms, other school.
The car, I believe, sixty-eight band, band groups alone. Um, they actually had to move the choir to the Great Wolf Lodge because the, the program has gotten so big. But yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot of noise. Uh, this is them afterwards watching. We actually get to watch some of the, the groups too. And this was a group from Stevens Point. And they actually played one of the songs that we played, which was really cool because the kids got to hear another interpretation of the piece that we had been working on. Um, so they got to watch, um, I think, two other groups. And one of the pieces that the seventh grade is playing at our concert on Monday is actually because the kids loved one of the pieces they heard. And it's like, "Okay, absolutely. I looked it up and I bought it for this year." Um, and they've really enjoyed working on, on a piece that they kind of got to pick out by hearing it. Um, so this is the information, the, um, the trip, it would be on Thursday, May twenty-second to Friday, May twenty-third. Our performance is at nine forty in the morning. Um, so the kids would get to go and, um, go to the water park when we get there Thursday night. Um, we'll have the overnight in the hotel, and then the performance is Friday morning. If I kept all of the students that are currently in sixth and seventh grade band this year, we'd have a hundred and thirty-nine students participating. Um, some may not. We may also have students come in, so I just put anticipated participation at a hundred and thirty-nine. Um, kind of assuming that everybody's really looking forward to this trip already. Um, transportation, we took coach buses at Six Flags for the first time this year. Um, it was much better for storage and actually a really, really great deal compared to the school buses. Um, so we're going to do that again. Um, shepherds, myself, Ms. Wiki is going to come along. She gets to make great connections with the middle schoolers before they come up to high school. Um, and then we'll have parent shepherds as well. Um, these are, this is the cost based on last year. They don't have the prices and they won't have the official prices until early next year. Um, the conference registration is six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, I applied and received, um, a grant from the EASD Educational Fund, um, to cover that six hundred and twenty-five dollars so that we don't have to put that on the students. Um, student fee, twelve dollars, which includes a pizza lunch and the actual, um, conference itself. Um, last year, we did breakfast from food service. They just gave us bag breakfasts. Like I said, I knocked on the door at six thirty in the morning, "Good morning," handed them breakfast. They got to get ready and, and eat their breakfast. And it's a lot better than the fifteen-dollar breakfast they have at the Kalahari. Um, I'd like to try to keep the cost as low as, as possible. Um, the hotel, the total cost is a hundred and fifty-seven, so if they have quad occupancy, thirty-nine, twenty-five per student. Um, I did have some groups that did only three. I had some groups that only did two, so then the cost goes up for them, um, from there. Um, I already contacted Jones about the, the cost for the coach bus. Um, and if we had a hundred and thirty-nine students go, it's about thirty-one dollars per, per student. Um, and that was thirty dollars when we, thirty dollars per student, we did school buses. So it's a very incrementally more expensive, but so much more storage to store all those tubus and various axes underneath the bus. Um, band shirts, we, a lot of the kids have them from this year. The eighth graders will have them, some sixth graders purchase them. Uh, but the total per student would be about eighty-eight, twenty-five. Um, I covered the security with the parking lot fundraiser. Um, we did, um, we did the, the fair parking. Um, we did one for the, um, antiques fair. Um, we also sponsored a middle school dance this year, which I hope to do again next year, um, which was a, a really good moneymaker for the kids. Um, and we did a fifty-fifty raffle at Bandarama, which was able to help bring that cost down. Um, another way of bringing costs down is last year I had them all purchase adventure passes, uh, adventure park passes. Um, and having been there now, I didn't think it was worth it for thirty dollars because you go in there and you still have to pay for other things. So I'm going to give an option to the parents, if you want to purchase an adventure pass for your child, you can, but not put it on everybody. So that brought it down from almost a hundred and forty dollars, um, was the average cost last year, to, um, just under nine dollars. So that will, um, it'll be a huge cost saving for them. Um, this is the, the alignment. Um, we get to, um, we get to talk, we get to reflect, we get to perform somewhere else other than, um, for our parents, which, you know, we, we love all of our parents, but they. When, when I said this year, "We're going to be judged by someone. They're going to tell us. They're going to, if we don't play flex, if we don't play sharps, if we don't play a correct rhythm, they're going to tell us." That really kind of lit a fire under them, um, because they realize there's someone that's like critiquing us and listening for all those things as opposed to yay, you play music. Um, so I think that helps a lot with them. Um, also the fact that we are combining seventh and eighth grade. It allows the seventh graders who are a little more advanced to play some harder music. It allows the eighth graders to play a mentorship role with the, with the seventh graders as well. And just having this giant wall of music, a hundred and thirty-nine kids playing at the same time is, is a sight to, to see. Um, and then afterwards, I had so many great conversations with the kids after the, the Kalahari last year, even after Six Flags where we could say, "This is what they said. What do you think about that?" And we were able to have a lot of conversations and reflecting on our performances. And even using that from the Kalahari last year, talking about this year. Um, so having those performance experiences have been really, um, really great for our conversations in class. And then this is a lot of stuff from the Beyond the Notes Music Festival website. Um, basically, it's talking about how they want to reach those middle school musicians. We want to be able to get those kids to, you know, keep going up into high school and, um, encourage them to keep playing. And being able to kind of cultivate that, um, that environment where they can learn, where they can grow, instead of it being like a competition. At Six Flags, it was a competition. We got a score, we got a rating. Here, it's what can we do? What did we do well? And what can we do to kind of raise ourselves up? So that is my information about that.
Do you have any questions?
Kind of weird one. What's your security fee for a hundred plus?
There's the security guard that walks the floors all night long. Which we tape, we tapes the doors to.
Fully supported, just didn't know what security was needed at a.
I had a lot of.
You literally weren't banned.
I was sitting in the hallway at eleven o'clock at night, and there were kids trying to like sneak out of their rooms like.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're, they're a little stinkers sometimes.
I'm thinking security, like, oh boy.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we need a, a motion, so.
I move to approve the middle school band overnight travel request as presented.
A second?
All second.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Approve? Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Very good job. Some good presentation.
Alright, next up is the middle school student presentation.
Good evening. My name is Jess Reime. I'm one of two associate principals. This is Nicole Harmeyer, one of my other associate principals, and then Joe Struie, um, business and technology educator. Uh, Ryan is, uh, very sorry he could not make it today. Um, he was on a flight back and a thunderstorm hit at the very time, so it slowed and changed their route a little bit, so. Um, he has landed in the last three minutes, so. Um, so, but, um, he did, um, prepare a little video, and then after that, Joe will talk, and then we'll take some questions.
Good evening, school board members. I'm Bernie, principal of the middle school. Thank you for inviting us to come stay, to share some fun that is on at the middle school. If you're watching this video, that's because I have experienced some unfortunate travel delays. I may or may not have.
So you do.
Certainly have a lot of follow-up questions, and we'll be hearing from Mrs. Struie in company shortly. Uh, I did want to connect with everyone about our presentation, um, related to our community partnerships. Our community partnerships are, um, one of the ways that we have leveraged our flex time in the teacher contracts as a way to, uh, to get kids out in, in the community, obviously, but really kind of more from that perspective that, as, as we look forward to students at the high school level and have those, uh, great, great career-based learning, um, experiences and, uh, and relating on the job. We were like, "Well, what is the correct way to, um, imitate that from an experiential standpoint at the middle school?" And one of the ways that we've identified doing that is through our community, uh, partnerships. Obviously, our kids will be different, uh, you know, thriving, things like that. So how do we bring kind of some of those exploration, those workforce elements, those, uh, non-traditional learning experiences to our students at the middle school? And again, we're doing that, um, through some community partnerships. So, our staff was each charged with, and this could be through their academic coursework or their, um, potentially their advising responsibilities for our club. Um, and who are they going to partner with in the community? What exactly does that look like? How, what is that connection to us going down here at school? And what was the scope? Is it a one-time event? Is it a wonder, more established relationship? And, you know, and then thinking about what is the impact on that, on the students? Getting back to our goals being creating those more, uh, experiential, um, activities that get kids using more of those soft skills as a playability skills a, as a way to grow that mindset so that students are ready to take advantage of those career-based experiences uh, later in their educational career. And, um, I would be remiss if I did not mention that, um, really, one of the reasons that we turned to a focus for this is because of the tremendous relationship and success, um, that specifically, um, Ms. Erica Carr and Mr. Steve Fisher have had with, uh, Wasa Homes. And, and the impact that that has had, the experiences that it has given students and, and the rest of our staff, seeing this, wanting to broaden that impact to their kids and, um, emulate that success. So I do want to take a moment here and just, uh, publicly say thank you to Wasa Homes, who has continued their wonderful partnership, uh, with its heart of Mr. Fisher and the middle school. We're deeply grateful for that and, uh, look forward to continuing that in the future. So, um, having said that, we had some really cool experiences that our middle school students got to be a part of this year, doing the work for our staff members. Um, again, you'll hear from Mrs. Struie shortly, but I just wanted to highlight a couple that I just really thought were, were really cool. Mrs. Seibauer and Mr. Grotz, uh, they have, through their curriculum or connection, um, uh, flight science they work with. And through this Seibauer's personal connection, they were actually able to work with a real, you know, real life, a hot air balloon pilot, which was such a direct connection toward their duty of class. They were creating their balloons and testing those out. So it really just hammered down, um, that, that learning in the classroom, but, um, broadened out as well. Um, and some of our advanced, advanced math classes, um, worked with, uh, Stacy White and Edward Jones in making those, those connections there, which is just an awesome thing to see because it's such a popular question in math throughout your school career for, for kids to say, "When am I ever going to be this?" You know, so that was really very, again. Again, our awesome, uh, partnership with Wasa Homes with the benches this year. We also had, uh, Mr. Hammond, our chief of, uh, partnering with the Girl Scouts, you know, having assistance and teach them uh, along those, along those lines, which was really a cool experience and a leadership opportunity really hammering home some of those, and those soft skills, those employability skills that will make kids be able to experience and practice with as they're growing throughout, um, their educational career. But, again, for tonight's, um, Mrs. Struie is here, hopefully with, um, some, uh, representation from, you know, some of her students. However, I know she's working hard on the schedule and that, but it is a crazy time of year for everybody. Regardless, she'll be able to talk to you about, um, the, the guests that she had in her classroom, the impact that it had on students, and again, uh, broadening that, those partnerships with the, the community. So, um, so as people are out and about and, and the topic of how core your middle school is brought up, that they're hearing about the awesome things, experiences they had with our kids, we continue to grow those, um, in the future. So without further ado, I will turn it over, um, to Mrs. Struie. Thank you. Everyone have a great night.
Wow. Well, thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it. Uh, I'm Joanne Struie. I have the privilege of teaching both computers and business at the middle school. Um, so I don't know how many of you have been involved in forensics ever or have had children involved in forensics. I don't know what the name of the category is, but I feel like this conversation is going to be that improv one where you don't, you know what the topic is maybe ahead of time, but you're really not sure what direction it's going to go. I was supposed to have a few other guests with me, so you're just stuck with me. Um, so business is a twelve-week seventh and eighth grade elective, for those of you that didn't know that, at the middle school. And we have brought in some speakers from the Advi credit union for two years now. Uh, we believe that the connection that they make with our students, I compare it to, um, it's a real-world connection. So, like a parent, I can tell my kid all day long, "Get your stuff turned in on time, uh, save your money, pay your bills on time." Yeah, yeah, in one ear and out the other. But when they are meeting people that actually talk through how they take the credit scores that they talked about in class and apply them, if somebody walks in the door, bless you, wants a loan. Um, these are the actual people that process these loans, and they say yes or no, or, um, they're the ones that adjust the interest rates if they come in with a poor credit score. So it was really cool to get the insight from an actual employee in the field. She also gave the students a lot of insight on banking careers. We do have a unit in business class that talks about a lot of different business class or business careers, but we don't focus in on all the different banking careers. And she, she actually, I learned some things from her about some of the, um, banking careers. They also touched on things like, um, fraud and, uh, cybersecurity that we've very briefly touched on during class. So I think that the connection that these students were able to make with these Advi credit union employees were very valuable because they have the real-world experience. Um, that everything Struie teaches is, is really true.
Yep, yep.
Um, does anybody have any questions about the course or the Advi credit union members or?
Thank you. I, going through the slide presentation shortly, I told them, what was it, forty-eight slides? So that's, you can go through and prove this wrong, but I, I think it's a great, uh, overview of all the different business partnerships and really want to thank the, the middle school staff and give them credit for really jumping on this and tackling that. And I, I think you sharing that experience of how that real-world engagement just has such an impact on the students and really gives that credibility or that relevancy to what they're learning.
Yes, thank you.
Any, any other questions? Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to.
Oh, we got through the whole presentation.
Thank you very much.
Next item is the approval of school visits from the regular annual session meeting of May thirteenth. Any comments on the regular session? That was a dash to our agenda. I think we can do the close as well. Um, both ones have handed out. So we have comments to close. Otherwise, I didn't entertain a motion to approve all the regular and closed session school board meeting for May thirteenth, twenty-twelve.
I move to approve the minutes of the May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four regular session and closed session school board meeting as presented.
A second, please.
All second.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Approve? Uh, next item is general and other fund bills.
The. General and other fund bills this evening covers checks number one-five-two-two-two-seven-three-one-five-two-three-five-two. Wire transfers nine-seven-eight-through-nine-seven-nine, ACH seven-nine-three-eighteen. The combined amount of two-hundred-three-thousand-eight-hundred-seventeen dollars and forty-one cents. And then there was a memo providing some information on several things in your board packet.
Anybody have any questions and anything else? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion for me.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Check numbers one-five-two-two-two-seven-to-one-five-two-three-five-two. Wire numbers nine-seven-eight-to-nine-seven-nine, and ACH numbers seven-ninety-three-to-eight-eighteen. The combined amount of two-hundred-three-thousand-eight-hundred-seventeen dollars and forty-one cents is presented.
A second?
A second.
That's the motion is second to approve the general and other fund bills of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Check numbers one-five-two-to-two-two-seven-to-one-five-two-three-five-two. Numbers, wire numbers number nine-seven-eight-to-nine-seven-nine, and ACH numbers seven-nine-three-to-eight-one-eight. In the combined amount of two-hundred-three-thousand-eight-hundred-seventeen dollars and forty-one cents. Uh, roll call vote.
Adam Andre.
Yeah.
Eric Gordon.
Yes.
Kevin Gayhart.
Yes.
Ed Scarrow.
Yes.
Heather Reckles.
Yes.
Kathy Costa.
Yes.
Nicholas Parkes.
Yes.
So. Student representative.
All on you.
I think it should be emailed, it's not attached.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, starting off the high school, I hope everyone had a wonderful Memorial Day and a day off yesterday. And an announcement, the senior stroll is two days away. So be sure to head downtown on Thursday, May thirtieth at one P M. Help give the class of twenty-twenty-four the send-off they deserve. We'd also like to congratulate the class of twenty-twenty-four on their last day of school and send them a future congrats for graduation night. Eighth grade science, working hard on crash tests to vehicles. Our seventh and eighth grade math meet team competed in the state mega math meet at Madison College on May twenty-first. And congratulations to these students for representing Oakhorn at the state level. And lastly, EHS freshman orientation is on August twentieth from eight to eleven A M. Don't forget to save the date. We'd like to again thank all of our veterans and everyone at Happy Memorial Day from Jackson. Kinnearan had ice cream at Friends on the Square and eighth grade buddy readers. And Mrs. Wade's first grade class had a fun time at the zoo where they were able to learn about many different types of animals. Congrats to the random drawing winners for being picked during the extra gacha drawing this week. And third grade visited Discovery World this past, past week and had a blast as they discovered new things. The Tibbetts Gym is going to be named after Kylie N. As she was a top fundraiser for this year for the Kids' Heart Challenge. The third grade classes had a wildlife assembly on Friday with Kathleen and Annette Tober from UW Extension. Options had their spring sing the other day, and we'd like all the students to know that they did a wonderful job. A picture of practice before the concert. CCA's senior signing day, and congratulations to everyone as they continue their path and on to the next stage. Mark your calendar for these EASD parent connections events this summer. And thanks to all of the wonderful readers at the reading club where ages zero to four were able to read and eat cupcakes.
Thank you, Nicholas, for your service this year and for doing the last two, um, report. We need to have a little thank you card and get it in there.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chad, well done.
As a senior stroll just downtown now, or do they do go to the elementary schools?
They go to the elementary schools, then to the middle school, and then downtown.
What, what is that?
Well, they just work after graduation practice.
Yeah.
They have a, you know, or they have the gown on and they, they go down the halls.
Some, some kids that went to West Side go back to West Side. You get to walk down the halls. Kids that were to Tibbetts.
Kind of high-five the kids in the hallway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really.
We made a sport, yeah.
So Mrs. Bosch started, uh, brought that forward six, seven years ago. And it's been, yeah, really neat experience. All the elementary kids come out and the middle school kids line the halls and they put on some circumstance and they walk around the buildings. And they get to see their teachers, you know, those that have been here their whole career, get to see all their teachers. Yeah, that, um, years ago, so, cool.
Very cool. Teachers enjoy it.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next item is for reading the revised policy one-eight-seven, uh, public participation in board meetings.
Right. The policy committee, uh, this was sent back to the policy committee and the, uh, this is what's before the board this evening. The blue would be the new language. Um, and the stricken language you know down below. But I don't know, uh, with one of the policy committee members, Mr. Scarrow, would you like to speak to it or?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, so this, through my uh private career, I've attended lots of different types of meetings. And the, a trend that I've been seeing is that that public participation is only focused and allowed on agenda items. And it gives the true spirit of why, why you have an agenda and why you open up for public comment. And then, and thinking about that in conversations, we said, well, what about people who want to, you know, talk about positive impacts for the district that are necessarily on the agenda? Can we give them an opportunity? So we've amended the language to allow for that type of participation. Um but for o- other items, if you wanna speak about them, uh they just need to be on the agenda. Um and I, I think it's keeps it, the whole meeting better focused. Um and so that we're not readdressing things that we've addressed before. And I just felt that we've had some situations that um I think we can, we can make have a better impact to our community if we stay focused on what we're supposed to be talking about then. Those are my feelings. And then working with rest of the community members, we got some good input, so. This is the first reading, so if you have comments, now please share them with the entire group and
We, we went, uh, we went back and forth. One, one thing that I had, uh, I had kinda wanted was to be able to engage with, uh, with the public and we went back through a couple of different ideas, but I think what we settled on here was, is the best way to do it. Because we can, and we discussed this a length, we can request something beyond the agenda. So, you know, my original thought was changed because if somebody is really adamant that wants something on the agenda, we can, we have the ability to do that. So like this, and to Ed's point, this keeps us focused, no distractions, no random comments that, you know, might be off the wall, but I, I, I really like the way that is, that this is being done.
Hey, that was some of the discussion with the policy committee is we already have policies that outline a process. If you have a disagreement or a complaint with how something's handled with the teacher, then you go to the teacher. If you're not satisfied, there you go, the principal, not satisfied there, or the superintendent, and then to the school board. There's already policies that outline that process. And so that was some of the discussion that going to this format. Might cut off some of that attempting to jump over um the dish, the current dish policy.
I don't recall reading it as every, um, one way or another. I'm still limiting it to a thirty-minute time block.
Yep.
And is there a break at which, at some point, I mean, for one or the other, we start with the positive comments and then roll into the second half of other agenda comments.
Yes.
I, you know, I don't know, I just.
Good question.
I mean, it'd be lovely if somebody had thirty minutes with the
The limits are still there, thirty minutes and three minutes for the
Right, right. So, you know, we can pack the room with ten people that would, you know, speak of our glories for the thirty-minute timeframe, but no.
Like you say, we've never really had, had, be an issue. Um, I just think if, if we have that much participation, let's get calls for another action.
All the mayor, yeah, yeah. I mean, in the, in the time that I've been on the board, which is not long, I mean, it's what, six months or so? Um, I, I can't say that I've ever seen really anybody be overzealous or, you know, grossly out of line in, in anything that's, that's taken place. Um, you know, I, I wanna make sure that we still, yes, we have procedures in place for people to, if they've got an issue, they have a complaint and, and the chain of command that they can work through, I don't want this to be seen as a block.
Corrected. It's not.
So I, I just wanna make sure that that's out there.
Yeah, I heard it as two separate.
Yeah.
So, so one of them, the first one would be the thirty minutes for positive impact. And then there'd be a thirty-minute one, an equal thirty-minute one for anything else.
No.
It's not the way it's worded right now, but we can take it correct.
Do we wanna spend an, an hour?
What?
I, that's what I'm asking.
It's not too public commentary. Yeah, it's just thirty minutes for both. Yep.
Okay, go ahead. We finish one, we'll roll in, roll into the next, but.
So should we, should we clarify that in the language for the second reading? A public comment period consisting of the first portion for pub, positive impacts, the second portion for those to share, you know, whatever the other, let's see, positive. And the second portion of public comment will be for those that send the means agenda.
Yeah, I just don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna see two thirty-minute periods.
Because you are right that if, if there was like, I could see if, if there was something of angst that, okay, something happened and you catch wind that, oh, this group's wanting to come and voice their concern on this matter. Well, that's on the agenda or we have something on the agenda, you could have a group come in and hijack it by saying, all I need to do is get ten people to drone on for three minutes about pub, positive things about the district and meet up the first thirty minutes.
Right. So, yeah, I just, again, I'm
Well, that's why we bring it up here on the first.
Yeah, there needs to be something in there, however we do it. Um, and I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to add time to our already long days and the dedication that we're bringing into this, but it's something that needs to be addressed.
I don't think the intent was to go beyond thirty minutes. So if we wanna put a timeframe on the positive and the other.
I think if you scroll up a little bit where it says the verbal comment period. Yep, just keep scrolling up. But, I'm sorry, scroll down, sorry.
Yes.
So, so right after the verbal comment period, let's just add in the verbiage there that says includes both, both common periods, you know.
Okay. Are we thinking fifteen and fifteen or ten for value than twenty or?
I would say just combined.
Okay. If we do combine, you could have a filibuster.
I, I was gonna say, you're, you're, it's sticky with it.
If we, if we have a filibuster, we've got more issues.
Well, not only that, but
A lot of positive.
Yeah.
It would be great positive times, but isn't there something within here that the board president or, or person acting can, can stop it?
Yeah, so, but once again, before the meeting even starts, if we have fifty of these,
Yeah.
we've got a problem.
Right.
And if, and if I'm here, I'm gonna suggest that we hold a separate meeting to address them, is what I'll suggest. Um, and
That's a good way to handle.
You know, I, I mean, it's, we don't have that much time to, to focus on what these folk, folks want, talk about, you know.
And there's very few instances where something is time-bound in the sense that you put on the table the agenda item to have a discussion.
Yep.
They, once in a while, if it's contract related or, you know, if you get in a employee termination or something, really rare instances, you know, for like specific timeframes that no action has to be taken.
Well, and like I said at the beginning, when I, when I started to speak, I said, in the time that I've been here.
Yeah, that's an issue.
It, it hasn't been an issue, but I understand where you're going with it and, and the reason to bringing up policy again. Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Good comment. Well, that's good. This is the first reading.
Okay, well, uh tweak the language a little bit for the second reading. If there's any thoughts on that, um, email myself. Otherwise, we'll take the notes from the transcription here and um make adjustments for the second reading.
Good. I know, thank you. Good comments. Um, personnel.
Uh, wait, can I back up? I'm sorry. And then I think it's the the paragraph that begins, let's see, I don't know if it's the last paragraph or not. No, it's not. Participants are required to register their intention to participate for one or both periods. And then it goes on to say something about rich Tichard, um, they can only speak once though. One public comment per person is allowed at each meeting. You can't have it both ways. They can't speak in both periods and only be allowed to speak once.
That's a good catch. Do we want to correct that to allow them only to speak in one or do we want to, to allow them to speak to both? With them being unrelated, we might want to allow them to speak.
Yeah.
I think they have, I think we have to.
We could put language in there, but they could speak to both our, for a total of three minutes or.
No, I think that they could, they could, they could, they could speak in each period for their limited time of three minutes. That, I mean, that's
That's same then, yep.
Yeah.
We'll add that language. Good catch.
Good catch. Um, personnel.
I stopped.
This time of the year where we have a, a lot of appointments and resignations, we want to welcome all of our new staff to their new uh positions. Matthew Wohl transferring from options over to the middle school as an associate principal. Michael Barnwell is a math teacher at options. Uh, Abigail Gibbs is a middle school special education teacher. Daniel Fiest is a, uh, Tivett's special education teacher. Uh, Grace Whitner is a middle school art teacher. And Erica Bills uh will be starting as a middle school volleyball assistant coach. Yeah, bless her soul. I wanna thank all those who have uh provided service to the school this year, this past year. Their reservations and as well as some transfers.
Any questions or concerns? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll move to approve the salary wage adjustments for supervisors. Sorry, I jumped it.
Yeah.
My, yep, my bad.
It's okay.
I can do this one.
Yeah.
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
A second?
Second.
Any other comments? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, curious. Okay.
How many uh positions are you still looking to fill, you know? Hmm, nine.
Okay.
Professional staff, does that sound about right, Bill?
Sounds about right.
Nine or ten?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're listed on the weekend. Um, if you ever wanna go and look and see what's on there, you know, people, family, friends, I mean, the, since, you know, in the last decade, we've seen a significant reduction in the applicant pools. And most of our positions will post now on until filled and for example, the special education, and we fast track that, but by the time we got to the interview, half the candidates were already hired and taking positions in other districts. It's just in, in some cases, as soon as the application pops in there, they'll call them in for an interview depending on, on the position in, in some instances, so. It's not like, uh, anyway, when I first got to the district, we were pushing three hundred applicants for an elementary position. Now twenty-five were, that's a great. Um, so. Yeah. It's, it's something that um Yeah, and nationwide, we're seeing the, the same situation. We're still fortunate that we do fill, you know, all of our positions are able to. I remember last, was, last year, I think the Madison much box in school this year. And then we started to school there with a hundred open positions. Uh Milwaukee, hundreds of, I don't wanna say hundreds, but similar type passion, uh just, yeah. So it's, it's almost one of those scenarios, you know, if you're in the woods and with a friend and a bear comes, you don't have to run the bear, you just have to run your friend. So there are a lot of friends around you or in the vicinity of the country. I, I don't know. It's gotta be addressed.
Okay, uh acceptance of school.
I always make sure if I'm out in the woods, I have someone. If I ever ask if you wanna go on a hike.
Politely, do I?
Uh, I have two school gifts this evening. Tibbetts Elementary B T A has donated eleven thousand forty-seven dollars to the Tibbetts art department. And Burger King of Oakhorn has donated gifts for the Summer Academy students and reusable gift certificates for E A S D staff with an estimated value of eight thousand nine hundred bucks. It's a lot of work.
And need a motion to accept these generous.
We move to accept the generous school gifts as presented.
A second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Alright. Next item is second reading of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five K twelve student handbook.
Right. Um, I think the handbook's, you know, rather lengthy. If there's any sections uh that you'd like to review, we did go back through this in the policy committee and met with the principals of middle school and high school and got the language that um I feel was largely in question, which was related to the cell phones. I don't know which section is that in.
And do we wanna share that with the rest of the board where we, what we were thinking there?
Well, I, not that we came up with a resolution or anything. I think the big thing that we were seeing is that the, there's, the language is there.
Right.
It's just true lack of enforcement. And um that was, and, and I, I knew, numerous issues. Um, so, you know, for me, it's, it's, you know, the cell phones, that's on page forty. I, I think for me, that was the enlightening thing, was that when we read through the language, we recognized that yes, it's already there. It's just our ability to uh make the determination and decision then to out and force.
Right.
Um, and then they, they moved around some language to make it a little clearer what was applicable for the middle school compared to the high school and so some cleanup, cleanup things there, but nothing was really no true language was changed, so.
I, yeah, there are some mild language changes or clarifications there. I, I think it is a graduated approach for an elementary and middle school. You know, they're not wanting them out and about at all. High school, the administration talked about the importance to teach how proper use, proper etiquette. And so that language was um, you know, clarified that, you know, they can have it on their person, but they should be outside and silenced unless directed by an instructor. Uh, most of the rooms have cellphone caddies that hang over the back of the wall. And we also talked about uh, cause there's technology out there now where there's these magnetic bags that you can lock the phones in. And so we're gonna explore getting those not for the entire student body, but for repeat offenders or those who violate the rule that their phone needs to be in a locked bag where they can't access it during you know, we can set, the administration can set whatever specific times work. Um, and I think they were all, all the administration, I think the boss could be worried, pretty excited about that. Whether they have to wear it around their neck or not, that's
To be excited.
Like a large case.
Yeah. Um, so I think we'll look at incorporating that strategy as well. Yeah. But I think those were then, a- any other questions related to any of the other handbook changes?
If not, we're looking for a motion.
I move to approve the modifications to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five K twelve student parenting handbook as presented.
A second please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My motion passes. Uh, the next is the approval of the salary wage adjustments for supervisors, administrators and central office support staff. And this is, uh, we reviewed this in closed session uh on May thirteenth. The recommendations were made and are part of this request for a motion to approve.
Yes, please.
I move to approve the salary wage adjustments for supervisors, administrators and central office support staff as presented.
Second please?
Second.
Hey, let's do a roll call vote. It was
Uh, Adam Andre?
Yes.
Eric Gordon?
Yes.
Kevin Gayhart?
Yes.
Ed Scarrow?
Yes.
Heather Reckles?
Yes.
Kathy Kausak?
Yes.
Nicholas Parkes?
Yes. So, well, um just a few announcements.
Yeah, the, um, I want to thank everybody who was able to attend the current college academy graduation, which took, took place last Friday. Uh, I'm sure we'll get the video of that graduation posted and one of the three, I mean, the three student speakers all did a fantastic job, but a really powerful speaker, the speech was given from the last speaker that really, I think, highlights the impact that current college academy has on, on the lives of students and how it can be life changing for them. He did a great job sharing that. Um, this tomorrow, uh, is the options graduation, five o'clock at the options gymnasium for anyone who's looking to attend. And that's the old Saint Pat's, uh, building. The honors night is also tomorrow night at seven o'clock P M. In the Elkhorn Area High School Auditorium. Um, the Elkhorn Area High School graduation is Thursday, May thirtieth at seven o'clock P M. On the high school internal bill, we're gonna have good weather this.
For sure.
And the school board meeting, um, the next school board meeting will be June tenth, six o'clock at the district.
Will I go for the ask? Motion. A move? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.